Chairman Noble? Chairman Goss?
Here.
Commissioner, sorry. Commissioner Shores? Commissioner Marino? Commissioner Waters? Commissioner Swat? We have a quorum.
Thank you. Everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Elizabeth, would you lead us tonight, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Be seated, please. All right, approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes of August 10th, 2021. I have a correction before we approve them or deny them. There's three corrections needed for the August minutes. The minutes reflect Commissioner Swat in three places that should read Commissioner Shores. If we're all in agreement with those three changes, then I'll take a motion for the August minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
None? Thank you. All right, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431. And I have Bruce Bollinger.
Yes, sir.
Would like to please step up and state your name and...
Hello, Bruce Bollinger. I'm an area sales manager for Tough Shed. I've been living in the county in Kingman area for over 30 years. I have a concern I'd like to bring up and in doing that, I'd like to read to you a letter that I've sent to all six of the Congress, uh, city councilmen and an explanation as to my concerns. The city now wants a minor improvement permit that is an application for placement, installation, and construction or development of the following structures: decks, garden walls, accessory structures such as sheds, permanent storage containers, less than a hun- I'm sorry, less than 200 square feet, and fences. There is no fee for this application, but it now requires staff time to review and issue it, and there carries penalties per city code. In the letter, I addressed or identified city code section 1-8 penalties, et cetera. My issue with this is that it was probably a consent agenda and it was never relayed to the public or the business owners that this affects. It still has not been sent to the business community. I, there are six, there may be seven shed companies in the Kingman Golden Valley area that put buildings in our community. Of the four that I've been in touch with, nobody's heard about this yet. So it's a requirement that the community has not been set on, uh, been told about. The setback requirements are already well-known and most of the time, we as a business inform our customers of those setbacks and it is the customer's responsibility to place the buildings in their, in that approved area. We have customers that live in small lots. Many times, customers will talk to their neighbors and say, "Do you mind if I put it a little bit closer to the fence?" A lot of times, their neighbors already have the product or their previous sheds already sitting almost on property lines. We probably have hundreds or more of these type buildings that are going to be grandfathered in. We're not going to go through to the city and can, and make people move sheds that have been there for decades. We don't need another layer of paperwork to keep the city staff busy. Remember, there's no fee to this application. The city attorney has a lot more important things to do than prosecute modern, uh, minor infractions. This is basically a solution in search of a problem. I encourage you to remove this requirement from the city codes and I've got a copy of that. If you'd like to see exactly what I'm talking about. What's the, what's the process for handing this up to you?
You can, you can hand it to Richard Hill.
He's the one that handed it to me.
We're good right now.
Okay.
Good idea.
So that's my concern. I highly encourage you to remove this requirement from the city codes.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item A, hybrid meeting in person attendance, call-in particip- Excuse me, Wes.
I'd like to ask you a question, please.
Please step up and state your name.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Wes Maroni. Um, my question is, back in 2018 or early 2019, you gave approval for the new sign that is at Stockton Hill and the freeway for the hotel. And on that sign was supposed to be a LED readout that would say, um, "County Fair this weekend" or "Drag races coming up" and stuff like that. And as far as I've been able to see, uh, there is no LED sign there that was part of the process that you approved for the sign. And I'd like to know, where's the LED sign?
Yeah, I'll have to bring that up.
Okay.
Address a concern with Richard.
All right, but they, they got their sign up and their hotel name on it and everything, but they did not follow through with the rest of the permit process, so I just thought I'd let you remember.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments during this period? All right, I see none. Thank you. Item A, hybrid meeting in person attendance, call-in participation and written comments. This is a hybrid meeting with three opportunities for public participation. One, in person. Those wishing to address the commission in person do not need to pre-register, but space is limited and will be allotted on a first-come, first-served basis. Attendance priorities will be given to presenters first and then non-presenters. Two, call-ins. Those wishing to address a commission by telephone will need to pre-register by 9:00 a.m. on September 14th, 2021 by emailing planning@cityofkingman.gov and provide their name, address, telephone number. They will be using email and agenda item they would like to comment on. Once registered, a link with additional instructions will be provided. Only those who have pre-registered will be admitted to the meeting. Three, written comments. All written comments must be submitted prior to 9:00 a.m. on September 14th, 2021 by emailing planning@cityofkingman.gov or dropping off the comments at the Community Development Department in the main city complex at 310 North 4th Street. Members of the public can watch or listen to the meeting live via Channel 4 or on YouTube at youtube.com/cityofkingman. Don, do we have any?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you, Don. Item three, reports. I want to read. Okay, item A, City of Kingman zoning code wins award for best ordinance. The new City of Kingman code adopted on April 26th, 2021 was named by the Arizona Chapter of the American Planning Association Award Committee as the winner in the best ordinance category for 2021. I'd like to, and I'd like to say thank you, Richard and Gary and all the, and all the staff that helped. We worked on this for two years and it was, as Richard stated, it was 50 years in the making to get to this point. So it's quite an accomplishment to, to do what we did in a matter of time and working with Rogers and, and those guys, group of guys, what an awesome group. So I just want to say thank you to everybody. Okay, item B, the 2021 Western States Planning Conference. The 2021 Western States Planning Conference held in Paradise Valley on August 22nd through the 25th, 2021, was attended by staff members and two members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I just want to say, I know Gary and Gary, we both enjoyed it. It was awesome event and a lot of interesting stuff. As I know the members that have gone in the past, it's very eye-opening and, and well worthwhile and it's worthwhile that everybody do, if you got the opportunity to attend when it, when it pops up yearly. So thank you. Item four, new business abandonment case AV21-0005. A request from KK&amp;P Land Holdings LLC for the extinguishment, abandonment of a portion of a public utility easement. The easement is a portion of a larger easement networked, granted to the City of Kingman on May 7th, 2007. The portion requested to be abandoned is 16 feet wide and approximately 530 feet in length and is located on a parcel 310-16-050 within the Kingman Airport Industrial Park adjacent to Columbus Road. Richard?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is the abandonment of a public utility easement located within the Kingman Industrial Park. It's a request from KK&amp;P Land Holdings for the extinguishment or abandonment of a pu- portion of a public utility easement. It was granted to the city in May of 2007 and the portion that is requested to be abandoned is 16 feet wide by approximately 533 feet in length is located on, on a parcel within the industrial park, as I mentioned. Uh, this map shows the, um... minimize that, sorry. This map shows the subject easement location is located, as I mentioned, in, within the Kingman Industrial Park just to the southeast of the railroad tracks off of Columbus Road. Uh, the portion that is being requested to be, be abandoned is shown on this map. The area around the easement is currently undeveloped. Uh, there is very, various industrial uses surrounding the area, uh, as well as vacant land and the railroad tracks. Uh, it is outside the city limits of Kingman. It's, uh, so the area is zone AD, uh, airport development on the Mojave County zoning map. The Kingman General Plan 2030 projects that the surrounding land use, uh, is manufacturing industrial. This is similar to the Mojave County General Plan, which indicates the area is, uh, heavy industrial on their, on their plan. Uh, the PUE was granted exclusively to the city in 2007 for a water line as part of a planned lumberyard. An eight-inch waterline was subsequently installed, but it has recently been removed. And the current tenant of the property plans to construct greenhouses in the area of the easement. The area is generally flat and is located within flood zone X, which is, which represents areas outside the flood plain that are higher than, uh, 0.2% annual chance flood or the 500-year flood zone. Uh, there's no, no utilities located in the easement. As I mentioned, the water line was recently removed and the easement abuts a street, Columbus Way, which has a 60-foot wide right-of-way and a 25-foot wide, uh, pave, which is a 25-foot wide paved road, road with no curb gutter or sidewalk. Uh, we posted the site on August 26th, published the item in the minor on the 29th of August and all property owners within 300 feet of the easement were sent a notice of the request and a notice of the public hearing and no comments were received. Uh, there were no objections from any department or agency for the abandonment. City engineer confirmed that there, there's no water line in the easement anymore and no future water line, uh, will be needed for looping of the system in that location so that the easement may be abandoned. Uh, several sections of their, our streets policy that governs the process for extinguishing or abandoning an easement. But in essence, the subject easement is, it was dedicated exclusively to the city. It is eligible to be vacated because no longer you, uh, need for the utilities and is not needed for any public, other public purpose. So staff is recommending, um, its abandonment and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
It was a, um, it was a lumberyard originally. Was the, was the water line used for like a fire hydrant or what was, what was the water going to?
Um, I, I imagine it was intended to serve the site itself. There, since it was a lumberyard, I imagine there might have been some hydrants within that area.
Okay.
But I'm not, I'm not sure offhand.
Okay, but they, they definitely don't need that, that water for the greenhouse.
That, that portion is not needed for the greenhouses. Engineer confirmed that to, to me.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Richard?
Um, I, when I was reading through it, I was curious, did the owner take out the, the water lines or did the city take them out? And when were they taken out and why? Were they just obsolete?
Uh, they were needed for their development, as I understand it, and I think the, um... I, I think the city was involved in the removal of the line since it was our line.
Any other questions? All right, I see none. Thank you, Richard.
Right.
I'll open it up to the public. If you got any comments on this item, please step up and state your name.
My name is Joseph Nguyen. Good evening, Mr. Chairperson and members of the commission. My name is Joseph Nguyen. I'm a local business owner and proud Kingman resident. My family and I enthusiastically moved here in April this year and purchased a new home built on a half acre located in the Rancho Santa Fe community. Immediately upon moving in, we wanted to build an accessory building to store our RV in early May. My wife Samantha and I decided to go ahead with an accessory structure and contracted with a locally licensed Kingman contractor to undertake the 30-by-50.
Excuse me, sir, does this have anything to do with what we're discussing?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, was it just strictly for that?
Yes.
I apologize.
Okay.
I apologize.
Sorry. Thank you. Any, any comment from the public on the abandonment case? All right, I see none. We'll open it up to the commission.
Does the land current? If we, if, if the city abandons this, does the land belong to the city then?
The land never belonged to the city. The land always belonged to the owners.
So if we, if they, if we abandon it, then they can just use it?
Yes, yes. We, we had an easement across their property, um, but we'd never own the properties surrounding it or, or the land of, of the easement itself.
Okay, so if the city abandons, it's interested in it?
We're just giving up the easement rights.
Then they can just use that space. Okay, I get it.
Yes.
All right, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion on the abandonment of the easement, um, to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Roll call bell, please.
Chairman Fredrickson?
Approve.
Commissioner Noble?
Approve.
Commissioner Goss? Approve. Commissioner Shores?
Approve.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Commissioner Swat?
Approve.
All right. Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
All right, item B, discussion of driveway improvement requirements for accessory garages and carports in single-family residential areas. The parking area design standards of the Kingman zoning code require all driveways to be improved with paving. This includes driveways to accessory structures associated with single-family residential accessory garages and carports that provide parking in excess of the required minimum number of parking spaces. Recently, there have been complaints and concerns raised in regards to this requirement. The Planning and Zoning Commission has asked to discuss this matter. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Um, this, uh, item is in front of you this evening for discussion only. This is not a public hearing. This is, uh, the, the subject is driveway improvement requirements for accessory structures in residential zoning districts. The new, uh, Kingman zoning code that has been in effect since, uh, early June requires certain improvements for all driveways, um, for new buildings and structures. Um, all parking areas, aisles, and driveways are required to be improved with a durable dustless surface of asphalt, uh, concrete or essentially a recycled asphalt surfacing or the equivalent of the above, which may be approved by the director. Um, the, all driveways are required to be extended from the required parking spaces to the improved portion of the adjoining street or to the property line of the adjoining street, um, that the city is maintaining, except in cases where a single-family dwelling is constructed on a, essentially a dirt street. In that case, uh, the minimum requirement for the driveway is ABC aggregate base course, which would be extended from the, uh, parking area, uh, to the edge of the property. And, uh, if the street is improved at some point in the future, uh, the property owner would be responsible for improving that, that driveway at that time with, uh, a concrete or asphalt per, uh, surfacing. And within the code itself, we define a couple of relevant terms, including carport, driveway end, and, uh, garages. Uh, within the previous zoning ordinance, uh, it required improvement of driveways to any required parking spaces. Uh, the minimum number of parking spaces for a single-family home, for example, is two parking spaces. Um, and that's true for both the former and the current code. Uh, and this is typically, um, as you've seen around town, a, a concrete driveway to a carport or garage that's also improved. An additional drive, additional paved driveway was not being required in the previous zoning ordinance as a condition of approval of an additional accessory garage or carport as long as the property met these minimum standards. Um, the new zoning code requires paving of all driveways that provide access to parking areas in all zones and for all uses. And that includes accessory garages and carports. An exception, as I mentioned, was the ABC surfacing that, um, is allowed in case of a property being developed on a dirt street. And that's temporary until the street is improved. So this is an example of just how the site plan kind of looks typically for an accessory structure. You can see kind of toward the bottom of the site plan, um, they've drawn in the proposed, uh, parking or driveway to the street. You see, they already had an existing driveway to an existing garage, but this would be the additional requirement. Uh, the minimum width, by the way, is only 12 feet and that's shown in this particular drawing. So, um, these are just some, uh, examples that I pulled off of Google Earth, uh, which by the way, these were all constructed prior to the new code going into effect. So where you see the extra driveways for the accessory structures in the back, that was all voluntarily put in. Uh, and these photos are actually in the Rancho Santa Fe area. Um, I mentioned that the photograph to the upper left, um, if this was being developed today, we would not necessarily require that property owner to bring in an additional driveway all, all the way to the street. They could have merged it with their existing driveway. They chose to do, do this, um, this design as shown here. And here we have a couple of examples, also in the Rancho Santa Fe area, of where, um, you do have garages in the rear of the property and there's not, uh, there's no improvement to the, to the driveway. The upper left picture, they just sort of drive across their gravel area. And the photo in the lower right, again, there's just a, an unpaved kind of surface to a gate and then they have a garage in the back. So the purpose of this change to the driveway standards in the new code was to address, um, problems of air pollution from particulates, potential drainage impacts and street maintenance issues that can be caused by vehicles driving on unimproved driveways and parking area surfaces and then tracking the dirt and mud into a street. Um, the change to the standard has resulted in a number of complaints and concerns raised by those wishing to build accessory garages and carports on larger, especially in larger single-family lots. And a lot of this has to do with the increased construction costs associated with the pavement of the driveway. Uh, we know of at least four cases where an application has been withdrawn due to the pavement requirement. Uh, on, on September 7th, we did have, uh, two comments that were, um, made during the public comment period to the city council, uh, by persons who were opposition to these standards. Uh, so the commission is, is being asked tonight to, to discuss these standards specifically associated with single-family residential accessory garages and carports that provide parking in excess of the required number spaces. And as I mentioned, this is a discussion item only. Um, you could certainly take comment from the public on it, uh, but it's not a public hearing. Uh, no action on the part of PNC commission is needed, Mr. Sir, at this time, other than to provide feedback and potential direction to, uh, staff. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Everybody have any questions?
I got a question for you, Rich.
Sure.
So those examples that you're showing right there?
Mm-hmm.
The city's now requiring retention basins for all improvements, correct?
Well...
It just came out this summer.
Detention basins, typically that's more for the, a, a commercial, but residential developers do have to provide drainage.
Within subdivisions that, like the old subdivisions that don't have retention basins?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if you're going to construct a home now, you have to put a retention basin in. So my question would be, for like that example on the left, where would you put a, a retention basin? How would you direct the, the water into a basin? I'm not sure that there'd be enough space there.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm not able to answer the question on, on drainage tonight. That would probably be a separate subject.
Okay.
Um, you know, presumably the drainage is going to be directed to the lowest point of the property. In this case, it appears it would be toward the street.
Well, like that, that top view, there, you wouldn't be able to put one in. There wouldn't be enough space. My other question is, uh, there's like a lot of, there's quite a few garages that are in alleys. I'm assuming that you wouldn't have to pay from your garage to the street. You would just have to put some AB in?
Um, well, if it's an alley and they're using the alley for access, um, in that case, we would treat it somewhat like a, a dirt street and they would be looking at just probably to the extent from their, wherever the garage is on their property to the alley, that portion would have to be paved, but they wouldn't have to pay the alley or anything like that.
Is de, is decomposed granite one of the items an individual can use as?
So, so the standard says, you know, it, it mentions a number of different things and it says, "Or equi- equi- equivalent of the above as may be approved by a director." So equivalent surface would be something that would last years, you know, similar to a concrete driveway or asphalt driveway. Um, we have had people propose other surfacing, but if it doesn't hold up over time, it's something has to be, you know, uh, yearly or, or even a couple of times, you know, a year, um, uh, fixed in some way, that wouldn't be, you know, an equivalent surfacing. So it just depends on the, you know, how durable it is. And we have consulted with our engineering department, uh, in, in some of these cases to determine whether or not this was equivalent surfacing or not. So I would say, uh, gran- uh, decomposed granite is probably not, not equivalent.
The only reason why I ask that is because I know some of the landscapers, when people are, when their home built and they do have RVs, they're putting in the decomposed granite instead of leaving a dirt, so I'll just...
Yeah, and, and if someone is just having, just putting in an RV gate and they're not actually constructing a garage in the rear, we're not requiring that to be a, a paved driveway. Some, in some cases, people choose to do that. In fact, in the photo, you can see there in the far right, there does appear to be a driveway to a, a gate, but there's no, uh, I don't believe there's any garage in the back on that property. So, but that's a, a, a property owner's choice.
Uh, Rich, are, are ribbon driveways allowed or does it have to be a solid, unbroken surface?
It, well, our standard doesn't, doesn't presently anticipate a, a ribbon driveway. Um, it, it talks about 12-foot wide driveway. You know, someone could predict, you know, pose... You know, someone could, you know, pose, I guess, concrete on either side, and maybe something else in the center. We could take a look at that if it was equivalent, since it wouldn't be the surface that would typically be, you know, driven on, we might be able to take a look at that, but...
Gotcha.
Not, we would normally anticipate that being allowed.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, Richard? All right, I see none. Thank you, Richard.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'll open this up to the public, and Joe is the only one that has written and addressed, wanted to address these comments, so please state your name again.
Yes, my name's Joseph Nguyen. I apologize for the previous mishap. That's why I'm not a city council member. All right, well, I'm going to skip through a few things then, because Mr. Ruggles already mentioned a few things here. You know, the new code states that a building is required to have a driveway consisting of concrete, asphalt, or equivalent. So the intent of the new driveway, to me, is still unclear to homeowners, contractors, and even city officials who have been addressed with questions, and use the word "think." I think this would be equivalent, or I think this is where we would go with this. If the intent is to prevent sediment runoff, the substrate from the street to my RV gate is one-half inch to three-quarter inch gravel. Behind the RV gate is dirt, which we already periodically drive over when moving our RV and other non-daily vehicles from the front to the rear. By putting in a driveway, by building an accessory structure, or not having an accessory structure, that doesn't lessen or increase my use of my RV. I'm still going to be using it, still going over the dirt, still going over the gravel. There is zero runoff due to that hardscape that was installed by my home builder. If the intent of the new code is to lessen dust, which I saw on the PowerPoint presentation, then let me reiterate that the city of Kingman is a desert environment. We suffer winds, monsoons, and haboobs, all of which uncontrollably transfer dust and dirt into the atmosphere. Also, as a homeowner, I have not noticed many of the new home builders around the city of Kingman utilizing a water tender to reduce dust that is created during their construction of the hundreds of homes being built within the city limits of Kingman. I have observed mounds of dirt and gravel being unloaded onto our streets, within the gutter areas exposed to wind, rain, and most recently, monsoons. I don't complain, because I'm aware that this is the desert environment, and it's temporary. And as a reasonable person, I look past that and realize that eventually that's going to end up in somebody's driveway, in their RV drive, or their RV gravel driveway, which they're going to use no matter what, whether there's an accessory structure or not. There was one point where I was told that it could be for emergency vehicle access, such as fire trucks, et cetera. I don't think there's a residential slab in the city of Kingman that can resist a 60,000-pound fire truck driving over it, let alone fitting in between a 12-foot gate. The average fire truck is over 10 feet wide. To come within inches of it is going to crumble the concrete, driving over six-inch Arizona fiber concrete. It's going to crumble. That's going to make that firefighting even worse. In conclusion, I would like for you to know that moving to Kingman has been a blessing for our family. We love the great American town and the people here. Many here utilize a desert theme to decorate their landscape in their front and rear yards. Concrete is not a naturally found material in the desert. Turning our property into a concrete island is not attractive, it's not sensible, and it's definitely not Kingman. The $18,000 added cost of adding a driveway to an accessory structure that is located behind an RV gate and block wall is unreasonable. I humbly ask you to reconsider or place a stay on this newly adopted applicable building code that is affecting the homeowners and contractors, specifically for who have already withdrawn their application, that help our local economy. And finally, I'd like to give you some information, the fact that I came into the zoning department, or the planning department, in early May, and I spoke to an official there who researched the codes, researched the potentially newly adopted codes that were later on adopted in June, and said, "Mr. Nguyen, these do not pertain to you, because it is not a dwelling. It doesn't increase the occupancy of that primary residential property, specifically my primary home. So therefore, it doesn't apply to you." Within two months, I said, "Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it." I obtained a local Kingman contractor, gave him a substantial amount of money. About a month and a half, maybe two months later, we submit our, our project papers for a permit, waiting for our engineering plans from, from the engineer, and was told now that it no longer just affects dwellings, it affects RV structures and accessory garages as well. So now, as a homeowner, as a resident, as a local business owner, we're in a bind, because the only way to get this now to pass is to pretty much fork over another almost $20,000. So I think it's unreasonable. I think it's not staying with the theme of our, our, our city, but that's something that I can't make the decision, and I just pretty much give you guys my point of view as a homeowner, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the public on this one? Please come up and state your name.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Wes Maroney is my name. My home looks pretty much like the upper-left. I did the driveway past the gate to my RV garage, and I believe that it adds a value and, to my home, and it does make the neighborhood look a lot nicer than looking at the different rocks. Some of the pictures that Rich had shown showed one area where the garage is back there, and then you see the, the rocks, or dirt, or whatever you want to call it, in the front, and it looks not very nice, and then people store their cars there, and it just starts looking like they belong on Route 66 at Pick Me Up Parts, you know? And so I, I have to disagree. I poured 145 feet of concrete 25-foot wide, and it cost $6,000. This was just not, and it's in Rancho Santa Fe, okay? I can, I, I had a steel building, and I had to concrete it for 18,000, so it kind of bothered me. But the, if we're doing this for aesthetic value, to make the Kingman look better, then I'm not sure either way. But why all of a sudden are we really going after, are we going to go after homes that are already have the rocks and make them put it in? You know, we had this problem with the shipping container war, you know, about four years ago, and if you drive around town, you still see shipping containers in people's backyards. They're not painted, they're not covered or anything else, and they're on smaller lots, you know? So I would say, before we change anything, that we really need to talk it out and, and see just what people need to do to have rocks or concrete, you know, and stuff like this, because as older parts of town, people have grass, or what used to be grass, and weeds there, you know, to their backyard. You go into other parts of town, we've got concrete. So I would venture that we would really look to see what you're going to change, or, and then grandfather, or not grandfather, you know, those are all things that need to be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wes, any further discussion from the public? Please come up and state your name.
Good evening. My name's Mike Case. Good evening, Commissioner and Chairpersons. I really wasn't going to say anything until this subject came up, and I just want to give a comment, I, you know, not really for or against this, but a town that I lived in about 10 years ago, in Indiana, they had a problem with rainwater runoff, and like these concrete, the more concrete you have, the more it runs into the sewer systems. And they had a problem with the sewer systems really backing up. You know, this is the desert, you know, and that's what we moved here for, not to become a place like Phoenix, you know, a cement city, you know? So I understand there are good points to this, but there's also bad points to it, you know, and I hate to see our sewer systems get all plugged up, and, you know, because the debris washes down and everything like that, and that's just the perfect channel for the rainwater to go to. At least here, we want it to soak into the ground to try to, you know, refill our aquifers, if, you know, I don't know if it will, because if we get that much rain, but it's just something to think about.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the public? Please come up and state your name, and...
Hi, Bruce Bolinger. This has been an interesting observation. I've never been able to address a committee like this before. So I've been fortunate in Kingman. The last seven years, I've been working with Toughshad, serving the community through selling buildings out of the Home Depot store. Currently, I sell approximately 20 garages a year throughout Mojave County. Now, how many of those are in Kingman? Off the top of my head, I can't tell you. But if we're going to put another 12 to $18,000 in expense for a necessary building, it's going to lose some business. Of course, that's also going to lose tax dollars. What's the benefit that we're going to get? What's the benefit that the homeowner is going to get by this new requirement? That's something for you guys that you're going to have to weigh. It is an expense, and we already have four people that have pulled their permits. How many more are we going to lose? If I've got somebody sitting in front of me at a Home Depot store, and I'm going to sell him a $22,000 garage, oh, but wait a minute, there's also the $6,000 for the concrete for under the garage, and then there's 6 to 10 to 14 to $20,000 of concrete to get to the paved street, now the guy's got a serious $30,000, $40,000 garage instead of a $20,000 storage unit, something that he's going to park his car, his car or his quads I would seriously suggest that you really weigh this out, and look at alternates if you're going to go with this. Let's do something with A, B concrete, A, B, C, or something that we can pour, put down in there and say, "All right, we want six inches of A, B, C," or A, B crushed, or a suitable, less expensive than concrete. So that's what I've got to say on that one. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on the public?
Sir, do I have to add something?
I'll allow you to, quick, state your, state your name again, please, just for the record.
Joseph Nguyen. One of the things I wanted to bring up, I forgot, and I apologize for that, is the fact that I live on a half-acre property, and there are quarter-acre properties, and there are two-acre properties, three-acre properties. One of my concerns also is, is this requirement applicable to someone who has a property that faces an adjoining street that's maintained by the city, but is 100 yards away from the street? Do we now also require concrete from that street, that adjoining street, to that property, to the front of that property? I mean, where, what, in terms of the application, where do we draw the line with that, if there is a line? Because I've seen homes here that I can't see from the street, but there's a maintained street. Are we going to, is the city going to require a paved driveway from that street? I can only imagine how much that would cost, and that's two, that could be 200 yards from the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? I see none. I close off with the general public. I hope I'm up for discussion.
I'd like to make a recommendation to put it out to the public, pull a public hearing, put it out there, and see what kind of response. I mean, we're getting some response tonight, but I think that we need more response. Let's make the public aware that this is part of the new planning and zoning code. Maybe they're just not aware, and I think it should be brought to the attention of the public. That's why we're here, and then at that point, have a further discussion after we get more feedback from the public, and then maybe we'll have to do a text amendment or something on it, and...
I'm not going to second. I'm just going to have a comment.
There is, there is no motion.
Yeah, we're just discussing.
This is discussion.
Gotcha. I can remember back in the late 80s, early 90s, out in the Butler area, it's not Kingman, but it's close, the dust, your window, you can even see out of your window after a while. So I get the point of, of these driveways to keep dust down. I mean, some of our speakers have already acknowledged that it's a dusty town. Why make it worse, you know? At the same time, in reference to Commissioner Noble, he's exactly right, and some of the other people who have spoke, that is a channel for water just to flow directly out of a property, and, you know, to make the impact on streets, you know, the drainage impacts worse. Now, Commissioner Noble, he brought up retention basins. How I, how I heard about these ribbon driveways was just looking into permaculture, and the reason why these things, you probably see on 1920s homes, you know, the older driveways, they're actually coming back in a way, because people can put a retention basin right in between the, the two, the two tracks there. And, you know, to point out to these, these people in the public, they're a lot cheaper to actually do it this way. So there's several advantages here that could benefit the city. So maybe there's a way to meet halfway and not, you know, immediately start changing the codes that we just worked so hard to develop, but, you know, tailor them a little more to help people out that are trying to build a driveway that's, say, 600 feet away from the road, or whatever, and save them a lot of money, and certainly some business for this gentleman out here, too, in the public. So anyway, that's my, that's my just observation here.
I had a couple of things I was trying to understand. The first thing I was trying to understand is what Commissioner Noble was saying about the retention basin. If, if I understood what you were saying, are you saying that that second concrete driveway is where the water usually flows?
So what I'm saying is...
Can you help me understand that?
When you, when you build a concrete driveway, there, there's factors that you take into With just natural landscaping, it's called a C factor. It's generally between .3 and .5. That's how much runoff is going to leave the yard. When it's concrete, the C factor is .95. Basically, concrete does not retain water, so when it rains, all that water will drain into the street. So you're adding storm flow to the street, and when you design a street, it's based on, you know, several factors, an average C factor for, you know, what's expected on a residential lot. And so by increasing the storm flow onto the street, the street is designed to carry a certain amount of flow, and when you increase the flow, potentially the street may not be able to carry that flow, that capacity. And it's my understanding that the building department recently required all new, like accessory buildings or concrete pads to, on residential lots, to require retention basins, and like, like in front of the hospital, that's a big retention basin. It's designed to capture water, so it's my understanding that they're supposed to be constructing retention basins when they build these, but I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. And then the second question that I had was about, someone brought up that the more concrete that you have, the more it runs off into the sewer systems, instead of going back into the aquifer, or instead of going into the aquifer, is that, is that accurate?
Around here, we, we basically have surface flow. There are some storm drains. We don't use our, we don't have a dual system for sewer and stormwater. It's a separate system.
We have catch basins. Catch all the water.
Yeah, there's no, like, sewers in Kingman, that I know of.
From, from my belief, I believe when the builders grade the lots, they grade with a swirl to, to run the water away from the property up to the street. I've never seen them build, and I might be wrong, I haven't seen them build with the, with the catch basin behind someone's property. Everything's swirled and graded to run the water to the front of the street. So if, what I'm saying... I'm saying is true, I think, I think there's a misnomer there on what's going around. I don't think you're creating any more water. Your water's running off whether or not you have concrete or not.
So landscaping, so we're, I'm assuming that that driveway in the top left was originally landscaping, correct? That's what I'm assuming. So when you, when you have landscaping, the amount of storm water that is retained in just general desert rock landscaping is twice as much.
Some of it will be, not all of it. True.
And a driveway of that length actually has quite a bit of water that runs off.
What I see in, and I'm in a fairly new development, the landscapers, when they know people have RVs, they put down black plastic, and then they put the rock over it. And what do we have? We have an eyesore, in my personal opinion. I'm not speaking for anybody else, but I think it's an eyesore after a while. And it seems to me, and I'm not saying anything but Joe and you guys had to say, but I've seen people in the neighborhood, they just don't seem to care. I think everybody here, you move to a city for a reason. You move to a city because you want rules, regulations, you're hoping that your property value is going to go up in time for all these, whatever things, for the desert, so forth. I think of a lot of people, if you didn't want this, you would move to Golden Valley, you would move to Yucca where you didn't care. I think most people do care with their properties, and I think possibly is one of the reasons why this driveway thing came up. Now, as Rich stated, the driveway doesn't have to come down like this top-left picture. Someone could curl it off up near the house and then go back. So you wouldn't be running concrete X amount of feet to satisfy this requirement as the way it's stated now.
Well, and I'll second that in a way. So I live in an older neighborhood, and there aren't a lot of these things that are in place right now. And when they talk about, like, a decrease in dust, I mean, I would also say it makes a real decrease in noise. When you have people driving big, heavy things down really, like, rocky driveways, like, it's kind of loud at night. And so besides the fact that there's less dust blowing between people's houses when people are driving back and forth, it's also a lot more quiet when you have big things moving back and forth on, like, rocky dirt area versus just a nice paved surface. I think it does help bring down a lot of the noise.
I can, and I can add another thing. I know in my, in my community, and I'm an RV owner, been an RV owner for 35-plus years, every one of my properties, and I never had a, I wasn't able never to put a garage on, but every one of my neighbors in my development have all concreted from the sidewalk all the way back to the back wall that I've seen in my neighborhood. So, and no one made that a requirement, and they weren't putting in a shed or a garage. It just, you know, we did it.
Well, we, sorry, this is just an observation. We just went to Paradise Valley, which was, obviously, they use a lot of water to achieve the look thereafter, but they do actually incorporate some of, I guess, retention basin, but for plants more, where their properties, like, if you look at that upper-left picture right there, there's basically a flat slab where, you know, water will drain off to the road, as we've been talking about. There's a different philosophy. It's called permaculture, where they actually try to plant the water into the ground on purpose to basically self-irrigate. And I don't know, it sounds like we're trying, we're trying to argue that flat, endless concrete is beautiful, and I don't really see that as necessarily the case. I don't see it necessarily as improvement. So I see, like, improved, like, this might be an alternative for some people rather than just assuming that that's the better. I understand that some, some of you guys are saying that it's quieter. Some people in the public are saying that it, you know, they came here for the desert. Just look at, like, Tucson or Paradise Valley is maybe what's working, you know, a different approach to making our cities look better. And maybe there's a small way we can incorporate that into our codes. So I don't know. That's just an observation.
I appreciate what Commissioner Waters is saying, and I think what I'm hearing from both the public and the commissioners is that the need for the code change was to, one, reduce dust, but also for better aesthetics in the communities. And maybe that doesn't have to be done completely with concrete. Maybe there are ways that, that the code could incorporate things that are sustainable for our environment, things that represent the desert community where we live, things that reduce the dust, and also things that make our communities nice places that we want to live and not, not just a free-for-all that people can drive on, people can have whatever sort of situation that they want. I want, I think that there's probably a way to incorporate everything, and I have a lot of empathy for people who are really trying and will take very good care of their properties, and so they would like the leeway. And I also recognize at the same time that there are people who will not do that and who need the specifications and the codes required of them so that our community can look nice. And that the effort that you make will be followed up by the effort of other people who would not do it on their own. So anyway, just a couple of thoughts I have.
I think that's probably how this came about, whether concrete or whatever is the answer, but something, because I think people do want something aesthetically, they want their, they want their nice community that they live in. And like you stated, there is people, and we all know that, there's people out there that don't take care of their property. So it's like, what do you do? We can't please everybody, but hopefully we can get a, get a resolution that, that will win-win for everybody.
And I really loved what Commissioner Waters was saying about options that are both more affordable and also good for our environment and good for our, I mean, that allows the possibility of not just concrete, of not concrete necessarily as a solution, but desert plants and preserving water and also more affordable. There may be, I just like that. I don't, I like that way of thinking about it.
I'm wondering, is there a way that we could direct Rich to look into seeing if there are more options that we could use that would have longevity, that wouldn't need to constantly being, being maintained, but at the same time could be different than just seeing flat-out concrete?
When Roger and then were, and you guys were working with them, did this come from, I don't want to say it, I guess, from other cities when we came down with this? Richard?
I think some of the issue was that...
I think one of the issues was that the, if you call it in the commercial areas, we did allow, if you over and above the minimum parking requirements, you could theoretically in the commercial area have an ABC surface for your, for your parking lot, which is something we, we didn't want to carry over to the, into the new code for the same reasons we discussed tonight, dust and so on. So we, what we were trying to achieve was a sort of universal standard that applied to all uses in all circumstances. But I can understand how we might want to look at this a little bit differently in the residential setting. Maybe there's some surfacing that we, other surfacing we could consider, the idea of having a ribbon-type concrete surface, you know, maybe in these circumstances might be something we could take a look at. So depending on the direction of the commission, we could bring you back some information for further discussion at a future meeting, if that's the direction you'd like to go.
I think probably everybody's on board. Let's, let's see what other surrounding cities that are fairly large, what are they doing to address? And maybe you and Gary could, at the next meeting or the follow-up meeting, bring it back, and we could go from there. Sounds like that's what everybody would like to...
Yeah, I agree.
I agree too.
And I think everybody that spoke tonight, I think it's a fairest, fairest thing to see if some other solution that maybe is not so cosmoprehibitive at this time, but yet aesthetically pleasing for the communities that we're living in.
Yeah, we could certainly bring you back some information at the, for the next meeting and take it from there and see what...
I think, I think that's, we don't need a motion on that, do you?
No, you just give us direction and I've got the direction at this point, so...
I think that's what sounds good, how everybody would like. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item C, discussion of architectural design standards for accessory structures in residential zoning districts. Under the adopted design standards of the Kingman zoning code, certain materials like metal are not allowed to be predominant material of the exterior of a building and may not be used on more than 25% of the area of the walls visible from the public right-of-way. Recent, recently complaints have been received regarding the standard and as applies to accessory buildings and residential zoning districts. Excuse me. The Planning and Zoning Commission is asked to discuss this matter. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is also an issue that's come up recently with the new code. This is specifically about the architectural design standards as they apply to accessory structures in residential zoning districts. In the new code, we have a sort of general standard for our all buildings, all new buildings in town that's established through section 4-20 of the zoning code. Under A, architectural standards, it states that all buildings and structures must be finished with the following, and this applies to building facades, which is the portion of the building that faces the street. The expectation is the materials would be made of masonry, precast concrete, stucco, stucco-like materials, wood or vinyl siding. In addition, other materials may be used but not as predominant materials. In other words, it cannot be more than 25% of the walls visible from the public right-of-way on the exterior of the building, and that includes things like metal, glass, plastic, and highly reflective materials. In addition to those standards, we have some other architectural design standards, try to discourage long, blank, featureless building facades and roofs. There's some standards about stairways and some additional ones regarding open carports and patio covers, which actually carried over from the old code. In addition, we have some relevant definitions for what a building is, a structure is in the code as well as our definition of facade, which is the exterior wall of the building along a public or private street, does not include alleys. So under the previous zoning ordinance, we allowed metal finishes on the exterior of all buildings and structures in all non-residential zoning districts, with the exception of the C2HMR district, which is, which is the zoning district along Walpied Mountain Road, and the Bank Street Design Overlay District. The appearance criteria in the old code applied to single-family homes in all districts and any accessory structures built on those lots. It did not allow for metal siding on structures except aluminum lab siding. However, in recent years, due to the increase in popularity of metal buildings, due to the cost of construction, we relaxed that standard to allow, say, powder coating or baked enamel finishes for accessory buildings in those residential areas. Also, if you recall, we changed the old zoning ordinance to not apply either the roof material requirements or the roof pitch standards if the building itself was a metal building. Under the new zoning code, all buildings and structures are, do have to meet these minimum standards. In addition, the Kingman Design Review Overlay, which is now applied to what was, which still is the C2HMR district, but is the design overlay for that district and for Bank Street, has additional architectural and site design standards that were carried over from the old code. So as I mentioned, certain materials, including metal, glass, plastic, and highly reflective materials, are not allowed to be the predominant material on the exterior of a building, and predominant is defined as no more than 25% of the area of the walls that are visible from the public right-of-way. And the term visible from the public right-of-way is somewhat problematic. So in order to be really equitable and consistent, the way we've applied this standard is to say, the portion of the building facade that is oriented toward the street is the side that is limited to the 25%. That could be metal or some of these other materials. And at the other sides of the building, even if it's possible to seat from the street, if it's not directly oriented toward the street, it's not the facade toward the street, that portion of the building could, in theory, be all metal, could have an all-metal finish. That's how we've been applying the code. And the purpose for this change in the, from the old standard to the new standard was really to elevate the minimum design standards for all buildings. This also applies to commercial areas in town, regardless of the use, the zoning district or the location, that would be consistent with a largely urban setting that Kingman is. And this is just a quick little diagram showing, again, the same site plan I showed in the earlier slide presentation, showing the sides of the building that would be the facade that's oriented toward the street, and that is the side that would be limited to 25% metal toward that side, with the other sides could be all metal. In this case, this is a garage that is intended to be all stucco, but this just kind of shows you how we would look at the, look at this particular situation. So this standard has resulted in a number of complaints and concerns raised primarily by those wishing to build accessory structures, such as garages and carports in single-family areas with metal finishes on all building sides, including those visible from the street. So similar to the last presentation, you're asked to review and discuss these architectural design requirements as they apply to accessory structures in residential zoning districts. This item is for discussion only. No action is needed on the part of the commission, but we would appreciate your feedback and any potential direction to staff. And with that, I'll try and answer any questions.
I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Could you go back to that image of the garage? Yeah, that one. Is the garage door, is that considered part of the metal that we're discussing?
So if it's a metal garage door, we would consider that part of that 25%. If the garage door is in excess of the 25% requirement, we're not requiring any treatment to the door? We're just saying that at that point, you've met your, you've already exceeded your minimum, you've kind of met it, so the rest of that facade would have to be stucco or some other type of material?
So on this example, it looks like the garage is probably 40 to 50%, right?
Prob, well, yeah, I'd say maybe a little less than half.
So what are the remedies for that, then? Because the garage door is going to be metal, and the rest of the structure is going to be stucco. So would that meet the new code or would it have to be...
We would allow the garage door to still be metal, and then just the entire rest of that treatment of the, that side of the building would have to be an approved material, including stucco.
And then my other question is, you know, there's a lot of businesses that want to have a, like, like these, the car stores, they want to have a lot of glass on the front so that, you know, you can see inside, you can see the cars. Is that, are there any solutions to that?
Well, I don't think they typically do metal buildings, do they?
Glass is one of the materials that's not permitted.
Well, it said, except on the first story.
First story, yeah.
What's that?
First story.
First story. So you could have an all-glass first story, if that's what you wanted to do. It's the second story or above is where it's limited.
Okay. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions, or Richard?
Okay.
I see none.
Thanks.
I'll open it to the public. Sir, please step up and state your name.
Um, I don't know how to address people, so I heard Rich. Well, if you can go back right here to the, um, uh, garage, on a twenty-by-twenty garage, you have a hundred and sixty square feet on the front surface, not counting the pitch of the roof. A sixteen-foot-by-seven-foot standard door is a hundred and five square feet. That's gonna kick the butt out of the twenty-five square, uh, twenty-five percent. We're looking at a close to seventy percent garage door. Under that situation, I can't build a twenty-by-twenty garage with a seventeen-foot door on inside-city limits. Is that what's happening?
No, sir.
Okay.
What we would say in that instance is that they, they exceeded twenty-five percent on the door, but were, would allow the door to be all metal. It's just that the remainder of that building, that side that faces the street, that side would have to be treated at some other material other than, than that material. So, it'd be everything other than the door in that instance.
So, the door is not part of the twenty-five percent?
The, the door would be part of the twenty-five percent, but if it exceeds the twenty-five percent, we're gonna tell them, well, you have to do something, or letting a metal door, the remainder of the side would have to be another surfacing other than metal.
Is there any chance that that might be misconstrued in the future? I don't want, I don't wanna go selling something and then, um, collecting money as, you know, his contractor did, all of a sudden, the city says, no, the garage door has to be smaller in order to fit the twenty-five percent. Can we, can we pull that garage door out of, out of your code or, or your statements?
We could, I mean, we could look at, um, options for how to interpret the code, that's just the way we've been doing it so far.
Okay.
Open up suggestions. Um, whatever interpretation we do come up with, we normally try to put it in writing so that I'm gone or Gary's gone, someone else would follow suit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments on the public? I see none, close it off. All right, open up for discussion.
Um, just an observation. Yeah, I know in here it says, uh, unique local architecture and natural environment, you know, we're keep, in keeping with it. When I picture like the unique architecture of Mojave County, I think of like chloride almost with those corrugated ten buildings. You know, our downtown Kingman, you got those one-car garages that are corrugated on all sides and the doors corrugated. You know, there, there's a way to pull it off and to make it look nice, but I, I totally understand why we're putting this in, because there's also the other component of people out there that will take a shipping container, leave it painted, and plop it in the back of a yard and, you know, call it good. So, I'm, I'm very tempted to, you know, hear the argument for expanding the allowable, uh, metal on the front of a building, but I've just seen too many bad examples of that being abused, unfortunately. So, that's my thought.
I think I'm in, I'm in agreement with you, Gary. I'm not a fan of metal garages. Um, what I've seen in, in my riding around is, these things aren't very pretty, what these people are putting up i- in their neighborhoods, um, and I, and I believe this is why we kind of addressed this, that a lot of the metal buildings have no more different appearance than a cargo container, and we had an issue with cargo containers, and everybody thinks, um, that they can go put a cargo container in their yard, cause we had a gentleman that owned a business here and he brought one, parked it out front. I'm sorry, I, it doesn't, it, it doesn't look appealing in a, in a residential neighborhood. If, if you lived probably on a couple acres, you know, I could see, but some of these, it's like no one had the imagination in the architectural design, and I think that's why we came up with this item to address this.
Yeah, and, uh, talking to Gary, as far as I know, if somebody did have like an incredible, you know, corrugated building, they can always come before us and ask, you know, permission to have like an exception made, kind of like, right, like we do with like, right, like we have done with like different things in the past, like people, it's not like it's set in stone, like if you have some great idea, like people can always come and ask for their specific case without us having to change the whole thing, so...
I think a good example of an all-metal building is Stockton Hill Boulevard in Gordon. We have that big, um, storage facility sitting up there and it's...
I know the one you're talking about.
It, it, it's, it's a pig with no lipstick, it's just no imagination, and I, I think that's what we're trying to avoid in addressing everybody's concerns that with, with these ordinance is to make it appea- appeasing to the neighbor, not only to the individuals Any other comments?
Um, just a couple of thoughts. So, if I understand correctly, someone could build a metal building and then put a facade on the front of it with a metal garage?
Yes.
Is that the way that you understand that?
Yes.
Okay. And even in a situation where the building is not seen, so it's on a larger property in the back, and so it might not be seen, still the side facing the road would need to have a facade that's not metal?
That's correct, that's how we, we're in this frame.
Okay. Not feel like it was within their budget to be able to build an extra building that would enable them to, to have some things that they appreciated and enjoyed, so I can understand and empathize with those people who would like to build or could more easily afford all-metal buildings. And at the same time, I, I think that it's not a lot to ask for a facade in the front, especially if the garage door can be all-metal. And it does, it makes a big difference in the way that our communities look, in the way that our neighborhoods look, um, in adding cohesion and just a nice community setting. And I don't know whether this is accurate or not, but there also might be a safety factor, probably not, if just the facade has to be different. Probably safety's not an issue there. That's all.
I think is everybody then in, probably in agreement on this one, just leave this as it was written and as we worked on it for two years to get...
Yeah, I...
I guess my, the last comment I have is to ask Rich to make it clear that a garage door can exceed the twenty-five percent.
I think that's fair. I think that would address, address the gentleman. Um, I, I, it, it's, it's out of, it's out of a discussion on this, but I know with, since you're in the shed business, I know we are having, we have a problem in, in the city with the sheds, and I believe possibly to maybe address your concern on why they came up with, you know, we'll call it a permit, but we already have a problem with people not adhering to setback requirements in the city, and it's, it's out of control. You know, as, as an owner, you drive around the city, y- you see the, the people's sheds, and I think that was only the reason why how Richard and the staff probably came up with this resolution. At least maybe we can get a grip, because we don't have, we don't have a code enforcement going around looking for these things, that's only a complaint-driven department, from what I've been told in the past, so that's how a lot of these, I think it's only just a help for the city to maybe to inform the, inform the, the residents when they do wanna get a shed, what the requirements are, and I think that's just something simple. May not work with everything, but I think that's how that came about. Any other comments? Alrighty, then, item five, announcement by commission members. Limited to announcements, availability, or attendance in conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. I'd just like to thank Richard and Gary and the city staff and council members for allowing us again to go to the Arizona Planning and Zoning Conference. Um, I, I get so much information out of there, it gets overwhelming. Um, I wish we can implement, and I'm sure Gary would probably iterate the same thing, I wish we can implement a lot of these things that we learned there, but with budget restrictions that we have here, but it, it's, it's well worth...
I agree, I've got notes from the, uh, the...
Yep.
Meeting, it, it spans several pages and there's a lot of good ideas in there, touching every part of, of the city, basically.
Yep.
Brownfields, everything else, so it was, it was well worth it, and I thank the city for letting me go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, need a motion for adjournment?
I had just one question or a request for, um, the information about the minor permit for gardens, decks, et cetera.
Say that again, please.
I think it was Bruce...
Yes, ma'am?
Who spoke about that. He, I, I was wondering if I could get some information about that?
Richard could be more than happy to, to give that to you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, I see none. I need a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input.